The July 10th, 2019 is now in session. Will our clerk please call a roll?
Chair Greenfield.
Here.
Vice Chair Posma.
Here.
Ron Heberlein. Peter Hurley.
Here.
Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Phyllis Mellon.
Here.
Simon Springall. Thank you.
Thank you. Please rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is the time in our meeting when we provide for citizens to have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that's not already scheduled for a public, a formal public hearing, which none is tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand so that we may hear from you now. We have no one in the audience tonight except on TV. We'll move right on then to consideration of the June 12th, 2019 minutes. They've been distributed. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to make? During none, the minutes are approved as distributed. And we move right into our one item on our work session agenda tonight, which is Residential Code Revision Project. Will Ms. Bechal present our staff presenter?
Yes, thank you Chair Greenfield and Commissioners. And before I introduce this work session item, I would like to take care of just kind of one administrative item, which is to welcome Daniel Polly, Planning Manager, to the Planning Commission team. It is my pleasure to share with you the news that Dan has been promoted, if you did not already hear that. It seems like old news now, but this is his first meeting with us here tonight. Dan has been with the city for over 11 years now, and he has, over those years, progressively taken on more and more responsibility. He's really gotten to know and work with the code a lot. He probably, he worked with many of you when you were on Development Review Board. A couple of years ago, two and a half years ago, he was promoted to Senior Planner. He took a team lead position with the team, working with them on mostly current planning efforts, but then, as you know, he started showing up here on some of our code rewrites and long-range planning projects. And so we were very excited when the Planning Manager position opened up, to be able to talk to him about the opportunity to move into that and take on even more responsibility, which Dan has done. And we're excited to have him in this position and to, he will be joining us each month here at the Planning Commission dais. So I wanted to kind of share that news with you and welcome him to our team here at the Planning Commission.
Thank you, I'm glad you did. I didn't think of it because Dan is such a familiar person to us.
And I will now introduce him for the Residential Code Revision Project work session. As the Planning Commission knows, we've been taking on really large projects lately, big visioning projects, lots of kind of big, long-range planning projects. And a lot of what we grapple with when we do those is, okay, what's the code that implements all of that? And what are the details behind that? And will we get what we're really aiming for when we implement these codes? And so we introduced this project to you two or three months ago at a work session. And this is like where the, all of that hits the road and where all the detail is in the implementation and are we really getting what we're looking for? And it's really important to implementation. And so what has happened, and Dan's going to outline this better, but is over the years of us implementing a lot of these other bigger projects, and even with the adoption of Frog Pond, we've seen where our code has some inconsistencies, or where there are areas where it's not as clear when we're implementing that on the ground. So Dan's going to walk through that tonight. As we had the work session, we broke it up into two different topic areas because it's a lot to go through all at once. So tonight, we're going to cover with you the density calculations and lot size for PDR zones. And we have a lot of examples to be able to provide for you to help you through that conversation. So we look forward to that tonight. Daniel?
Thanks, good to be back with you. So, as Miranda said, we've broken this down into two topics that we talked about last time we had this in work session back in April. And in the end, there'll probably be additional items that are added to this project, as there's a number of discussions about related to residential codes. But for tonight, we're focused on density calculations and lot size, particular for the planned development residential zones. So what I'll cover tonight, beyond what's in your packet, is the background, why this is important, and then get into the details of the challenges we face on the code and recommendations to address. In terms of background, many of you know Stefan Lashbrook. And he has held, now retired, but held a lot of hats in the city, including he was Planning Director once upon a time, a couple decades ago, when he led an effort to redo a lot of the development code, including the planned development regulation. So that last code update was wholesale put together in the late 90s, adopted in 2000. Since then, a couple of notable amendments overall, including 2005, there were some adjustments to the open space code, and then revisions to the ADU standards in 2010, and as you all know, recently in 2019. That said, the planned development residential zone has not been used as the urban growth boundary and city limits have expanded, more than the land that is currently applied to. So as the village zone was added, a new zone was, or as Villebois, the area that's now Villebois was added to the city, the village zone was created specifically for that. And then as we've moved into Frog Pond, a new zoning district called the Residential Neighborhood Zone was, was adopted, as you all know, in 2017. And, and I'll talk a lot more about the Residential Neighborhood Zone and the importance of that work that happened in that project as it relates to the modernization or updates that we're working on now. So really, excuse me. The, how we got to what is the Residential Neighborhood Zone today out in Frog Pond West is, we started with, we took all the best components of what we felt were the best components of the village zone, including things like rules of adjacency and some of the basic architectural standards, mixed that with the best components of the planned development residential zones, and then mixed in some model codes and best practices from research done by, by our consultant team. And that resulted in what we have today. This project, one way to understand it is to pull out the problematic components of the PDR zone, mix back in some of those lessons learned through the residential neighborhood code, code process, and then a couple other lessons learned and best practices result in the code that staff's recommending that we move forward with at this point. And a good discussion point we had back in April is, where does this really matter? Does it really matter? Particularly, as we talked about some of those additional PDR zones to fill in the gaps. And based on that feedback, we've actually, as you'll see, we pulled out a lot of those, since there's really nowhere where they'd actually be applied most likely. And so in this map, it really circle, tries to highlight where these changes will have the most impact. There's a couple of parcels 15 to 20, or areas 15 to 20 acres that are undeveloped residential land within the city limits, where, that are larger projects that at some point in the future, these standards would likely apply to. There's also a number of smaller projects, you know, less than five acre, particularly one to two acre parcels that as pressures continue to build residential development in town, that are likely to redevelop. So we'll talk a little bit more about how, how that fact relates to what, what the proposals are. So why then are changes warranted? There's, first of all, I, so I broke this down into really four points of which I'll come back to as you go through the different changes. The first one is just the basic notion of excellence and continuous improvement. The code, I mean, that is one of the guiding principles in, in the council's recent goal setting process. And so we're moving, keeping that in mind as we're moving forward with this. Also making the code more clear and objective, ensuring that the standards we have are feasible to implement, and also better tailored to the smaller scale projects, as going into the future, we'll likely to see, more, more frequently see these standards applied to smaller scale projects. So I want to step through more details of these reasons, one by one. First of all, that continuous improvement. I mean, most of these PDR standards, as I mentioned, were adopted almost 20 years ago. And there's been, in that time, as a number of you probably have been, that have been on DRB, may recollect, we've run into some issues with this from time to time. And that's been identified by staff, by decision makers and customers. And it's good practice to address those periodically to update our code. And in doing so, there's certainly some of those things that could be fixed that really won't have that much impact, so we're focusing on those improvements that will have the greatest impact. Clear and objective standards is something that certainly state rules and the discussion about housing in the state has been a focus. And, you know, as we've looked at this and how Wilsonville's doing in terms of housing, it could, you could look at portions of our code and say they're not particularly clear and objective. That could be a fair argument, however, it's consistently been found that while they could be understood as subjective, they haven't been implemented in a matter that has unduly increased cost of needed housing. That's really seen by what has been produced, the really the result oriented view of, of this. You do see a mix of housing in the community, and many of those things that do meet those state standards. Still, it's a good idea to make code clear, more clear and more objective where we can. The current code certainly does lack some clarity for calculate, how we calculate density. And, and with that lack of clarity, then relies heavily on subjective waivers, which, again, a number of you that have served on DRB have worked through those way, subjective waiver processes that are not always ideal. So we're really aiming to add clarity to the code and limit the need for those subjective reviews. Feasible implementation. The math doesn't always work, honestly. You have what I call conflicting land consuming requirements, things like density and minimum lot size, right away, open space stormwater, things that take up a finite amount of land. And so this project aims to adjust the standards and to reduce these conflicts and ensure that math works under most circumstances. So this is one way to look at that, those land consuming requirements, you, kind of the basic basis of it is you look at minimum density times the minimum lot size, you add the open space requirements and the right away dedication and stormwater treatment areas, and that can lead to an area greater than the available land. As I alluded to, accommodating the smaller projects, the current PDR standard is really designed around how most of the city was built. Most of the city has been built as large master plans or moderately sized master plans. So it really focuses on larger projects and implementation of those larger projects that have been built over Wilsonville's history. And in doing so, it really encourages land consolidation and makes smaller, and doesn't really work smoothly oftentimes with smaller projects, which we're facing more now as, as the city builds out. As I mentioned, new growth areas aren't using these zoning standards but are adopting specific zoning standards for, for those areas. There's only those couple large sites, the land just north of town center owned by Metro Graphics, as well as what many Wilsonville know as the former Filbert Orchard on the south side of Wilsonville Road at Montebello. And at what point those will develop, we still don't know, or don't, the owners have not indicated if they have any specific plans now or in the future. There are a number of potential small sites throughout the city. And so up really focusing on those small sites and, and making sure they're well-designed and functioning correctly should be a focus as we develop standards will, that will be applied to residential land within the current city. And it's worth mentioning here that as we make these changes, that all these other developed areas are planned developments with regulations that were adopted and standards and lot sizes and such that were adopted as part of those planned development approvals that really are, will still exist even with the current code changing for future development in that sense. So with that, let's get into some of the specific changes. First one being, this first one being this mismatch between the comprehensive plan text and the map. And this really focuses on just that continuous improvement. Really, there's not much applicability of this one. If it was any bit harder than to change one number, we probably wouldn't worry about it, but it is just changing one number and makes, and makes an obvious, and corrects an obvious error. Next is this fact of, again, many of you that have been on DRB are very aware of this, where the comprehensive plan and the development code both listed conversions from the comprehensive plan map densities to the PDR zones. However, those conversion lists are not consistent. And that's an obvious, I mean, a developer or anyone coming and looking at our PDR zones right away say, what's going on here? This is really strange. And so to have, this is certainly an opportunity for improvement. And those conflicts also add to a lack of clarities. Over the years, we've developed, over the last number of years, we've been pretty consistent on explaining that the comp plan density rules, and so even if there's a conflict, the comprehensive plan is kind of the overarching document, so that should be applied over the development code, but making that clear in the actual code text would be welcomed. And also, the clarity, I was going to mention this before, the fact that I see a trend that as housing becomes more and more of a hot topic in the state, that having greater, we're going to tend to have greater legal scrutiny of our housing-related decisions than we have in the past. So having our code buttoned up to, to make sure, to limit our, our exposure there would be a good idea. So here's an illustration of what the code has today. It's, the comp plan and development code are, are consistent for PDR 1 through 3, but then when you get into those mid-range ones, that's where it really, particularly the 6 to 7 and 10 to 12 units an acre, which is, is a designation for much of the city, there's some overlap and confusion there. And so correcting that will be of the most impact. So any questions, comments on that particular one? Let me see what. Okay. If not, I can go ahead and move forward. The next one is, again, it's removing, so, all right, let me step back. So the recommendations are then to remove the PDR zone reference in the comprehensive plan text. Oftentimes, when you have conflicting language, the most simplest fix is just remove, remove one of the languages so there's not the potential for the conflict. And that really does work in this case. And it makes sense since the development code is really the document that is explaining that how, the, how the comprehensive plan is implemented. So having that language live there, live there, rather than in the comprehensive plan makes sense. And then the development code, the list in the development code will rely on precedent, what we've been doing for the last number of years, how we've been interpreting this and applying these codes based on a number of case files over the years, just so we're remaining consistent with the past going forward. Any thoughts at this point?
I think we've raised it before, why cannot the PDR zone simply be redefined to be consistent?
So we're reducing the number, we're not changing the number of PDR zones. So they're just going with how it's implemented today, and just clarifying that each density range in the comprehensive plan has a direct correspondence to a PDR zone. So I can go back to. So we're keeping just the seven PDR zones.
I think your next slide shows what's proposed, so that might be helpful.
Yes, thank you. So this is the proposed, you'll have the, the seven zones, and then the comprehensive plan density range district. And added the word district, because what you start to run into is when you're looking at finding 80% of the maximum, you don't always have a whole number. However, you don't want a map covered with a bunch of decimal points. And so the district label is, uses whole numbers, but the actual density, as we'll talk about a bit more, uses decimals as necessary. And we'll talk about the max minimum density as well as the minimum lot size a bit more here in a bit.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
And maybe this is a bit of a silly question, but we end up with a gap this way, right? I mean, there's nothing in the 12 to 16 range at all, is that strange? Yeah, valid point.
Correct. So we talked to, we, so the proposal we had in April filled those gaps, which is a nice exercise, makes a table nice and clean. But at the same time, there's no land in the city that has those designations. And we don't anticipate any of the new urban areas over time particularly having those designations. And if at some point the city, the decision makers wanted to assign that density range to some future land, then we could add it as part of that legislative process. But at this point, it'd be more of an academic exercise to make a, to fill in, to fill in gaps.
We're doing a cleanup process here, not a legislative process so much, right? So if we're going to create zone, create PDR zones that have those densities, we'd want to go through a different route, I guess is what we're saying, right?
Right.
Okay.
Is it really, it wouldn't really impact any actual land.
Point being is it doesn't exist right now, so we're not going to use this exercise to create something that doesn't exist.
Right.
Okay.
Where does the missing middle fit?
The missing middle, and certainly we'll be having more of this discussion over time as we look at implementing House Bill 2001, and we won't go down that, go that direction tonight. But really, all of the PDR zones allow all sort, the whole range really, from single family to multifamily. Certainly, likely we'll add those specific definitions from state statute into our code at, at some point, probably part of this process that we'll discuss in future months. But any of those could fit, and it's a balance in where you put them, so they could really go in any of those, of these zones. And a number of these zones have, would allow row houses today. So we're not really multifamily, we don't really divide between multifamily, single family. All those housing types are actually allowed in the PDR zones. And so as I've actually looked at them, have I started looking at potential code updates related to recent legislation, PDR zone is actually probably one of the zones that looks the best in, in that regards, because it already allows for, for that housing variety.
I was remembering the range between 7 and 15 being the sweet spot. And you're missing, those are your gaps. Some of your gaps, but we can, as you say, address them if we come up in our, I'm already thinking about, you know, the upcoming task force work of looking at affordable housing and the missing middle and all that. But I, I'm sure if we come up with a recommendation or a proposal, then you can make sure that it fits here.
Certainly, and I think that exercise, if, if for, through the equitable housing project or a future legislative project, we decide to redesignate a piece of land within the city or a new urban area with a specific density that's not represented here, that is, that would require a designation of another density range, then it'd be a simple exercise to add it to the table or to the list in the, in the comprehensive plan map. So I think it, it does, the way it's proposed to be set up would allow that exercise to go fairly smoothly.
Thank you.
I would just note two things, since the conversation has kind of come up, which is that staff is aware of House Bill 2001, and we are working currently on looking into what the scope of work might be for the city. And that information will be brought to you, as well as the council for a briefing, in terms of what we'll need to do to assess our own code and adopt any changes. We have until July of 2020 to complete that work, excuse me, 2022. But the sooner we move forward, then we might have some opportunity at some technical assistance grants from the state. So we're looking into that and those opportunities. And I would just note that you did, I mean, I think part of the reason these questions are coming up too, is that at the last time, we did talk about filling those gaps. And we felt like in terms of moving through the conversation, it was easier to take each item one at a time. So the first is separating out this cleanup portion of it. But if there is a desire to have that conversation, and once we move through these first few topics, we can still talk about adding those in during this code update and change, so that if we do want to apply them in the future, we have the opportunity that they're already in the code, as opposed to having to create them at that time. So it's something that, once we get through these topic areas, if you want to bring that back on the table, that's something we can bring back. We just noticed that last time, it caused a lot of kind of confusion. We felt like it would be easier to move through one at a time.
I'm okay with it coming up when there is an actual need for it. I'm not interested in perpetuating bureaucratic nonsense, but I'd never use it. I'm fine with either way.
So leaving the gaps actually makes it a little easier to adapt to new needs, rather than changing things that are already there.
Correct.
Well, explain that to me, because, I mean, if somebody, you, I mean, they're, you know, the old Filbert Orchard, for instance, is a relatively large in size, and let's just say it's something that did fit in the 7 to 10 range, might be ideal. We don't have anything there, and we'd have to go through a legislative process in order to get there. So maybe we are tying our hands a little bit, and I don't know what the solution is. I guess my point is, is, you know, those gaps may be, maybe leaving us an opportunity where a developer can't move quickly, because we're going to have to go through a legislative process in order to open the door for the density that may be appropriate for the site.
Or is that a waiver?
Wouldn't it be a waiver? But again, it's easy to do it either way. It's just put It's just putting another row in this table. So I will take the direction of the commission on whether or not we want the gaps or don't want the gaps. I think my understanding from April is if the gaps weren't going to be used, why do, why put them in there? But if there's a reason to put them in there, we can put them in there.
Why don't we work through the topic areas tonight? And then we will just bring that back as part of your part two discussion as a subsequent discussion item for you. And between now and then, you can think about it a little bit more.
Thank you.
So next, once you have hopefully clearly identified what the density range is, how then do you turn that into how many units are allowed on a given property? And this is unclear. Similar to the topic we just talked about, there's been some common practice over the last number of years that we're using, we're basing it on gross. Also, the concept in the code, there's some conflicts where once you figure out that minimum or maximum density and the number of units you can have, then you have these standards for average lot size and minimum density of build out in the PDR text that oftentimes don't align to what you, the math that you just figured out. So again, some conflicts there. So resolving these, get back to the excellence and continuous improvement, updating the code, making the code more clear and objective, as well as this is where we start getting into making sure the math works and that the standards are feasible to implement. So the draft recommendations is first of all, to clarify the density calculation method. And this method really mirrors what, what has been done to determine the unit ranges in Frog Pond West under the residential neighborhood zone. The difference being is this doesn't have defined subareas yet. So in lieu of the subarea, it will be calculated based on the stage one master plan area. And it's based on what termed buildable gross acreage, which is the gross acreage minus the significant resource overlay zone and Bonneville power easements, which again is similar to what has been done in Frog Pond West. The second, second recommendation is to remove the average lot size, minimum density of build out requirements and examples of typically permitted language in the PDR to avoid conflict and simplify the code. Over the years, I haven't seen that particular language actually guide development. It really, really then comes around as saying, why doesn't this math work out? Why is this math not working? And so to remove that potential conflict and simplify the standards into a table, similar to what we would see in the village zone or, or the residential neighborhood zone is the recommendation. So the draft density calculation text really starts, it starts with that buildable gross area. And then of the stage one master plan area, you then multiply the upper comprehensive plan density limit by the gross area, then round down to the nearest whole number, and that is your maximum unit count. Then taking that maximum unit count and multiplying and taking 80% of that is then your minimum unit count. And you end up, and to illustrate that for the, for the different density range districts in the table, you have the maximum density and the minimum density being 80% of that maximum. So questions on this one?
The net effect is going to be more apparent open space. Is that right?
Well, this doesn't, I mean, we'll talk in a minute about how this correlates with open space. But at this step, it's just having a clear number similar to what we have in Frog Pond of, okay, you have this much land, how many units can you build there? And this is how in practice we've been implementing it over the last number of years. But it's not entirely clear in the code. So again, we're a little bit exposed there potentially if someone challenges us on it.
Dan, can you tell me what practical advantages of using gross density versus net density are?
Because gross is, the simple answer to that is gross is constant. So if you use net and net can change based on, okay, the engineer is deciding which, which, which road section should be used. And if it's going to be a 40 or 60 foot right of way, then that number changes, the number of units change. And it kind of becomes this resolving math problem based on how much net area there is because net area is not necessarily a constant through the iterative design process.
So what happens is gross prevents the cooking of numbers. However, net is a better reflection of how people experience the density because it's the actual lot sizes. Right?
Correct.
That's what I mean by apparent.
And that can be accommodated for by under, kind of this underlying understanding that it is gross, the gross, that the density does not necessarily, working with it with, on the gross level, takes into, understands that that doesn't represent, that's not all lot area. And we, we're going to talk a bit more about lot size and how that's experienced here in a bit. But it's just, yeah, the net is, can be such a variable, it becomes cumbersome and uncertain to calculate that. And again, this is, that discussion, as I recall, was had at Frog Pond as well. But in the end, because of this, having a constant and being able to set the certainty that it was, the gross minus SROZ and BPA was used to determine the number of units in each of the subareas.
One of the things that going with gross does though is if you are trying to address the adverse impacts of a development by doing some out of the box things which add to the open space more than what is minimum required, like, you know, extra stormwater practices or whatever, then it reflects, or it penalizes the developer because it shows in the form of a lower density for the whole development. And it is a lower density actually because you have fewer lots for that gross acreage. But the incentive for it was to do something that is better for quality or environment or habitat or whatever. Although you are saying here that you're taking SROZs out of them, I'm saying if somebody wants to do more than that. And that's where the cooking comes in, which is what my initial response was to your statement is, you know, that, that opens the door for people to say, oh, you know, I'm protecting, I'm making wetlands. I'm rehabilitating wetlands that are not required as SROZ. And that's good for the environment and all that. It means fewer lots. So you're preventing that is what's happening. But it makes your job easier because you don't have all these numbers all over the place that are changing.
And it makes the job of the DRB, and I think everyone involved, much easier, the neighbors, anyone that's concerned about what the density is. It just creates a constant quicker in the process that I think is, is the best way to go.
The reason why I'm bringing this up is, is I'm hoping that the commission will keep it in mind that, that what this decision is doing is potentially taking the incentives away from those who want regenerative development, development that regenerates natural functions that have been lost over the decades. But if that kind of a thinking ends up getting abused by developers or, or engineers or whoever is kind of trying to cook the numbers, then it's not really regenerative. It's just becoming abused. So I'm, I'm not advocating that we should go with net. I'm just wanting to make sure that there's a, this is a fork in the road. You're, you're going for practical enforcement, which is very specific and clear and objective versus this other approach, which a lot of environmental groups are, are advocating, the regenerative development.
Thank you.
This is kind, let me, let me make sure I understand on this chart right here. Really what we're doing is, is you're applying that draft language to the comp plan numbers to get the minimum and maximum densities inside this red square, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because then it seems a little strange to me, and maybe this is more a question for Amanda, I don't know. We get these anomalies, right? Where the math works out where, you know, I think what's most striking to me is, is you have the one minimum density requirement where it's a 10 to 12 zone and it's actually the minimum, the minimum density per acre, per math can come out to 9.6.
Correct.
And I'm wondering if that create, you know, we're talking about creating some legal certainty and trying to avoid some legal exposure. I mean, at some point in time, those weird anomalies may be telling people, you know, maybe, maybe something's available that ends up not being available by the time you crunch the numbers. I'm wondering if that's problematic. That may not be an easy thing to wrap our head around, but. Because we never, I mean, truly speaking is, is, you know, the PDR five zone, for instance, it's, it's listed as 10 to 12 dwelling units per acre, but you can actually get down to 9.6. And then on the reverse, right? I mean, if you look at the PDR four zone, you can actually build a little bit more than seven, even though the zone is listed on the comp plan, which if I'm remembering right, has some additional requirements on how we can, can, cannot create legislative requirements for how we create our comp plan, if I'm remembering that right. Does that cause any concern? I mean, it's just a little bit weird where the expectations we may be creating off of listing a comp plan of six to seven, but it's really six to 7.5.
I think that back when the code was written in 99, 2000, trying to get to this point is what caused a lot of the issues.
Yeah.
Is trying to make a whole number out of a number that doesn't want to be a whole number.
Right. Right.
So, you know, as I've thought through that, my recommendation is you, you use specific language that the density range in the comp plan is not the actual range, but it's essentially a district, a title.
Yeah. And I guess is that understood to the point where no developer's going to come and say, that's not what I expected based upon what's on your comp plan? So I'm going to raise a big stink about that. I, I don't know that.
I think the implementing table, that's, it's important to, the implementing table in the development code has those numbers right next to each other. It's very clear this, that this isn't the actual density. These numbers are the actual density range.
Okay.
It's a hard one to get around.
I, yeah, I know. And, you know, maybe the paranoid lawyer in me is still struggling with, you know, what's somebody coming along and thinks my expectation versus what I can actually build is different, and I don't like that. But I don't know.
I mean, I think what, I, I understand the comment. I think the reality is, is currently because we don't have the numbers listed next to it, right? So somebody comes to me and they're like, okay, we're in PDR five, we're 10 to 12. But the code says that their, your minimum is 80% of the maximum. And so technically, if you already do the math, and I were to do the math, that 80% of 12, it's 9.6. So it's just that there isn't currently the chart there that outlines that for them. So technically, that's what is already.
Sure.
Allowed. This is just making it straightforward.
So in other words, maybe we're actually making it less risky than it currently is, but we're not eliminating the risk.
And in no case were we, are we reducing the density that they're allowed at the max.
Right.
No, but it may not be the density as easily advertised, I guess is my concern. But it's maybe neither here nor there.
I think that, I mean, if this were to go to court, I think the argument of, look, we can't fit all those decimals on a, on a zoning map, you know, could, could hold up.
I'll let Amanda calculate the risk of all that right now while we move on to another subject.
All right. So let's move on to this idea of the conflicting land consuming requirements. The, the math doesn't always work. And also realizing that no matter how good you write your code, there's still going to be circumstances that the math still isn't going to work. So again, this minimum density times the minimum lot size is to have the minimum amount that you need for lots. And then you add the open space requirements and the right of way dedication and the stormwater treatment areas, et cetera. And those can exceed the available land. Couple example, so why it's important, kind of all of those things we've talked about, improving the code, making it more clear and objective, making things feasible. And also, this has been a particular issue over time for smaller scale projects. And so being able to better tailor it for those projects. Couple examples. The first example is a 4.37 acre lot, the zone PDR three, that has about a little under 50% of the land in SROZ. So the minimum density from the land outside the SROZ would be nine lots. Plus to, to keep the value of the SROZ, you need to allow an SROZ transfer, which would be another five lots, so you'd have 14 total lots. So when you take the gross area, you take out the SROZ, the right of way, the usable open space, which is a quarter acre. In this project, they actually went a little over. And so then you end up with only one, just over one and a half acres as the actual area available for private lots. Taking that by, dividing that by 14, you end up with about 40, 4,850 square feet as the average per lot, which is less than the minimum lot size. So in this case, then typically then you'd have a developer, either it's, it's the code setup where it's easier to get waivers for lot size and setbacks than reduced open space. So typically, they'd request a lower, a lower lot size, which can be problematic, particularly if there's a lot of neighbors that are upset and want to challenge the project, then it creates a lot of uncertainty and the DRBs caught and council are caught in, you know, this level of uncertainty without objective standards to apply to the waiver. You know, are there things we should apply to a waiver beyond the fact that the math doesn't just work? Is that a good enough reason to give someone a waiver? So, I mean, those are questions that the DRB and council has been faced with over time. Second example is a smaller lot. This is a good example of something we may see as an, as a smaller infill project. 1.48 acres zoned in zone PDR four, which would end up with a minimum density of eight lots. So you have 1.48 acres, you take out the right of way, which ends up being, in this case, a bit more than 20% because the need ends up being a dead end and you need the fire turnaround and such. So you end up with, you know, 0.4 acres of right of way. fire turnaround and such, so you end up with, you know, 0.4 acres of right-of-way. You then take out the open space, and you end up with 0.71 acres available for private lots. Divide that by eight, you're at 3,800 and change average square feet per lot, which is less than the 4,000 square feet. Again, if you have upset neighbors, at a public hearing, the DRB had some uncertainty of, "What should I do?" And a developer that wants to reduce risk, what we've seen in these sort of scenarios over time, is a developer that wants to reduce the risk would just turn this into a multifamily project, because they would be able to, the opens, they wouldn't need to put in the public street, they're able to use the land surrounding the individual units as count towards open And we've seen that a couple of times. So to have the flexibility to go with different unit types, including single-family, really addressing this sort of, these sort of conflicts are important. So that said, the recommendations are first, and this gets into some of the discussion about the net and kind of relates, and it's, in some ways, in lieu of doing the net calculations, is allow modification of the lot, is to modify lot size requirements to enable the density requirements to be met, along with other land-consuming requirements in typical circumstances. And then implement an adjustment process rather, that relies on a specific procedure and prioritization, rather than on an uncertain waiver process. So here you'll see, right now, what are under, if you assume the current open space standards, what you would be looking at in terms of potential change of lot sizes. So a number of them are reduced. And this is takes a gross buildable 10 acres, takes out open space and right-of-way, and then takes that net area and divides it by the maximum allowed units. And this is the square footage you end up with. That said, it's rounded down a bit in a number of cases, because you're in almost every subdivision due to a couple of factors, either a desire for variety, or just simple geometry of the lots, that not every lot's going to be the same size. So you need to go slightly under that in order to allow a variety of lot sizes. As I mentioned, Frog Pond West did use a similar methodology, however, the parklands, these were known, and they actually also, there is an assumption of takeouts for non-fillable wetlands. And these numbers, these are initial numbers, I will say that these lot sizes recommended will likely change after we have our open space discussion, based on what we determine on the open space, because if there's less separate open space in these developments, then the lot size can be bigger. Because they're essentially competing for the same ground. So a little about the adjustments. It really, the way it's set up is it prioritizes first meeting the density requirements, simply because those are requirements driven by the Metropolitan Housing Rule and things like that. And then it looks at open space, and finally, lot size. Opens, and that's consistent with even how the waiver process is set today. You really can't waive density in our code. Open space, you can only waive if you have a really good reason, and there's, and you can essentially meet it by other means, by having other existing open space nearby. Then lot size falls into that category of waiver, where if you have a good reason or a decent argument, usually you can get it waived. So what happens then is where it's not physically possible to make the math work in a single-family development, you can adjust the minimum lot size. And when you adjust lot size, you have to also allow adjustment of the width and depth to get to the area. So this would, the draft right now would say that you can reduce 20% of the lots, or a minimum of one, if it's a four-lot subdivision, can be reduced by a maximum of 20%. So the example given here is if you have 100 lot subdivision in a PDR 5 zone that has a minimum lot size of 2,000, that would allow 20 of those 100 lots to go down to 1,600 square feet. And then you could, of course, adjust minimum lot width and depth to get the lots to 1,600 square feet. And then, once you maximize your lot reduction, you can move on to reducing the open space to make it work. However, there's floors to the open space reduction, which will likely adjust based on what we decide in our open space minimum discussion in our next work session. So that is what I had to share tonight. Happy to go back to any of these to discuss more and answer questions, and get your feedback and guidance on what we're working on here to meet these objectives.
By the time we do the 20% reductions, I mean, do you think that that's practically speaking, eliminating all the possibilities that there's just unbuildable because you can't make the math work? I mean, I'm assuming if you can do 20% reductions, you can, the likelihood that you can't make the math work and a lot becomes, and a space becomes undevelopable is probably slim, is it?
Yeah. You know, I've obviously thought through this on a number of real projects.
Right.
And usually, it's close, right? It's, like, the two examples, I don't think that's atypical, that, you know, maybe it's a couple hundred square feet that they're off. If a site just isn't developable, it's, that's the case, you know? You can't make it work for everything. But these typical projects, it really can accommodate that.
Well, but I guess the question would be, is this exercise making a buildable one, unbuildable, just, but it seems to me that we're working the other direction, that we're making it more accommodating, so we're not, by doing this, making some things unbuildable that otherwise would have been buildable under our previous.
Correct. And also, things that ended up being buildable through the waiver process, creating more certainty for the developer, the DRB, and the neighbors.
Without waivers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Question in regards to something that we talked about a couple of months ago, and, excuse me. Every time that you mentioned, you know, where waivers were, were not available, and one of them was open spaces, and one of the things that we had talked about a couple of months ago was, what if, and I don't remember exactly if we got into the point of, you know, it would allow for a waiver to it, but what if, on open spaces, the developer were able to get a waiver to reduce the size, or, you know, the amount of open space for a higher-quality open space? I remember that Cameron and I were talking about here in Planning Commission, in terms of, you know, there's a lot of open space in Wilsonville that's basically unusable open space in developments. And I know that my subdivision is, you know, very much of that. There's lots and lots and lots and lots of land that nobody can use for anything. So I, you know, and to get these numbers to work, so like, say you've got somebody that's got a 4,800 and change, you know, lot size, but they really would prefer it to be something around five or, you know, a little bit more, but you've got this huge requirement for open space, and all it is is a bunch of arbivida and, you know, roadies looking at, you know, versus being able to say, "Oh, we actually have a park here," or "We have a walking trail," or "We have a sport court." So I would like to see that ability, and instead of saying, "Oh, you know, open spaces, no waivers."
Correct. And I think our discussion next work session will really get to that. That is one of the discussion points certainly identified and challenges, is that there is open space, that it's just a quantity exercise now, not really a quality exercise. So really, staff's recommendations are to make some changes. It really emphasized the quality and intelligent design of open spaces over the actual quantity of open space.
Of course, then you run up against a clear and objective problem.
Yeah. And so, and it gets down to how we can be clear and objective on that, to actually make sure they're designed. We'll get into this more next month, but simply have qualified professionals actually designing the areas.
Thanks.
Yeah.
No, the only thing I would say, just to close it out, though, is that, just to go back to what Commissioner Mesba was saying before, which is, I think it's the one thing that still gives me some concern about all of this, is it's just, we're working on a math equation almost here, but it does have some hard reality that it ejects into a development, such as, like you said, using the gross versus the net, makes, while the math may work out the same, it just seems like more compact housing in some instances. And I think that still bothers me a little bit, but I don't, I don't know that there's a solution. I think I'm just bringing up the fact of, if we, if we have these zones and we want them to have this feel of a density, it may feel more dense, simply because we're doing it this way versus another. I don't, I don't think there's a solution. I just think I'm throwing that out there to all the other commissioners, that it's something that continues to bother me, that, how density for most of the public is a feeling more than it is a math problem. And we're dealing with the math problem rather than the feeling.
Yeah, and I think some of, as we talk through this over even the next number of years on other projects, something that's been very much on my mind is, you know, it is a feeling, and what creates that feeling? Is it setbacks? Is it the actual number of units? Or, you know, what, is it more urban design, rather than the actual number of units? And how can we address that? And so, and certainly, that's on our minds.
In any case, feelings might be clear, but they're not necessarily objective.
That's why coach writing's so much fun.
Yeah. No solution, just throwing that out there. That's the thing that just continues to bother me with it.
Sure.
And I know that we're thinking about that throughout, but...
Actually, I'm not sure that going net versus gross, I'm still rattling it in my head, whether it is going to necessarily result in the appearance of more density. Not necessarily. I think net, because you basically are prescribing minimum lot sizes. In an area that doesn't have a lot of natural resources, ends up being wall-to-wall development, and it will look very cluttered. So I'm not sure that it's necessarily more dense feeling when you go with gross. It's just a different approach to looking at how many lots go in a place, you know, it's just, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I think the only thing I would ask is, just for clarity from staff's perspective, if all four of these topic areas, if the draft recommendations look good to you, or if there's any more dialogue that's needed...
Thank you. That was my question as well. Resolution, or...
We know that the one might be impacted by the open space discussion, and so if it is, we will be prepared to bring that back, based on the results of your discussion around the open space. But I guess I would, I would want to know if generally, if the policy direction for the four items that we outlined tonight, and that are right in your staff report, I think staff wants to know if there's additional refinement needed, or if they look good.
I'm good with it, with that one reservation. It's a small one, but we'll look at that in more detail. But I'm pretty satisfied you're moving in the right direction.
Yeah.
Well, this session is dealing with quantitative stuff. You're reserving your qualitative talk when you talk about open space and so forth. You just touched on design, which is another qualitative thing. Those, to me, have much more impact on the feeling of density of a development...
Right.
...than anything that you've discussed tonight. So I eagerly look forward to next month's conversation.
Yeah, as we get, as future conversations also start touching on Frog Pond more, and any changes to the Frog Pond West standards, then certainly that will also be of increased interest likely in the community.
I'm thinking of Charbonneau. In some neighborhoods in Charbonneau, you'd be hard-pressed, actually, to count the number of residences reliably or quickly, because they're so cleverly designed so as not to appear to be separate residences.
Right.
So the density is actually misleading.
Yes. Especially with mature greenery, which screens a lot of units.
Yeah.
But again, is that clear and objective? I have never, yeah, I'm the one that speaks to this the most, I think. I've never been totally sold on the clear and objective requirement. I still think that there's room for a city to exercise some aesthetic judgment.
Yeah, I think it's a balance where you got to make sure aesthetic judgment doesn't become a veto power. Thank you.
Does the city have more for us in the work session mode? Then refer to the city council action minutes again. Anything to inquire of the city council through the staff, or to take to the city council?
Just quick, did the Kinder Morgan disaster training occur? I read about it, and then I kind of lost track of when it, when it did.
Yes.
That was a most interesting session, following up, that they held. It wasn't very widely attended, unfortunately, but it was a very interesting session, and a little disturbing, too. We learned, for example, that if a clean cut in the pipeline should occur, it would take 15 minutes for the valves to be shut, and in that space, up to 1,000 barrels of 42 gallons per barrel could be spilled. So while it is still, it's a good thing that we have now in place some electronically-controlled valves, so that we don't have to send somebody out to twist the iron. 15 minutes is a long lag time, it seems to me, but it is what it is, apparently. So our work calendar. What are we looking at?
Well, it's the last page in your packet. Next month, we will bring back the second set of residential code modernization topic areas for your consideration. We will also have an update from the project manager of the French Prairie Bridge project. And we will also have staff here from communications to talk to you about an online engagement tool that the city is launching this August. So the city is contracting with a software company that essentially would provide the city with kind of a second website, I guess is one way you could think about it, but it's the platform, right now, the city's website is primarily information out, right? It's a way for folks to find out the departments, the different... It's a way for folks to find out the departments, the different committees and boards we have, when their meetings are, how, what the information is that's out there. And we often will put up there when we're having an event, but there's no kind of engagement to it.
Is this interactive?
So the, the purpose of this website would be to be interactive, and it would be a platform that would have, that where we'd have the domain for it. And that domain would be consistent for every single project where the city's engaging with the public. And so the benefit of this would be things like where the WilsonvilleTownCenter.com is where we had people engage with the project. That was contracted separately, it was a separate website, and then other projects would have their own websites, and people would have to somehow track down each of those websites. A lot of the benefit of this system is that they would always go, we don't, haven't picked the domain yet, but always go to Wilsonville Engaged or whatever it would be. They'd always go to the same domain, and whatever projects the city is actively involving or asking people to comment on would all be on that same webpage. So they'd be able to see, oh, transit has a survey, and planning is doing a quick poll, or traffic is looking for comments on, you know, intersections that are problematic or whatever we're asking for, or vote for what movies you want in the park that next summer, if it's parks putting out a survey about their activities. So it's a way where people can always go to that same website, know how to engage, and have an opportunity to engage with the city. And so we are working on pulling that together and hoping to launch it for the block party. And so you will, there will be a presentation next month to walk through what that will look like and how people will be able to engage with it.
Does this have capability to deal with the incoming data like Survey Gizmo or Survey Monkey?
So it does, it does come with registration capability. And so in order for somebody to participate in the website, they register, and there's a set of questions that come with that. That information is then tied to all of their responses. So whenever that person engages with the website, that information is with it. So if we want to know, demographically speaking, who's responding to our surveys, we can learn that information. And we can also find out how people are responding. So are some, you know, are some users only responding to parks-based surveys, or are they responding to everything throughout the city or vice versa?
But at the next level of analysis, once I fill my survey, is this also crunching the data for the survey like, like I said Survey Monkey does or not?
I don't know how Survey Monkey works. I'm not that well-versed in it, so I'm not, I can't quite answer to that. But what I can answer is that it does do this analysis for you. So for example, if I was doing a town center plan, and I had a survey out there, and two weeks into my four-week survey, I wanted to know who are we hearing from? I can go in and I can initially see who's responded to the survey. And if we're missing, you know, younger people, then we can do a push out to the schools to try to engage more youth. Or if we're missing another demographic, then we can say, okay, let's try to figure out how we might be able to reach out to those group of folks and get them engaged. So we do have the capability of even during the middle of it, at any point in time, seeing where the responses are coming from.
Yeah, the respond, the responder analysis is what you got.
Yes.
But you don't know if you have the response analysis because some of these other survey tools, once you get them, you can go in there and you can generate reports from the received.
So this will automatically, one of the things it will do is automatically generate the response, like it'll do the number crunching for you. Is that the question you're asking? So I won't have to go in and say, okay, I had 300 respondents, and how did they all answer question number five? It will automatically put up a bar chart or a pie chart for me to see that response.
So it does.
Yes, and so what's nice about that, one of the benefits we see of that, is that a lot of the reports coming out of this will always look similar to the Planning Commission and the City Council. So there will be some consistency there in terms of how the information's presented. And we're hoping this saves us a lot of money because currently we rely on our consultants who do a lot of these projects for us to do a lot of that, and it takes, you know, a lot of time to get that information back as well. And so we're hoping that we can be more nimble with the outreach. One of the things we learned with Town Center was things that we thought might work, didn't, and then we had to change direction. And it was hard to be nimble when we were, we did that, but it probably, you know, it, we had, we had already spent money on something. Whereas if we have our own platform tool and we can say, nobody's responding to this quick poll or survey, let's change tactics and try this other engagement tool and ask similar questions, but through this other plat, through this other tool and way of doing it. So when we come next month, we'll be showing the different capabilities of this engagement platform. There's about, I think, eight to 10 different tools that can be used at any time in a project for each and every project, so.
You're also building a transparency habit for residents.
Yes.
It's kind of like, like a confessional. Everybody knows where to go and confess. Do we have a consultant hired for this?
We, you basically contract, it's a software program. So you get initial assistance in setting it up, and they do offer, they have 24/7 assistance. So if you're having technical difficulties, you can reach out. Many of them actually have planning and community engagement background, which is interesting. And so they can provide advice and direction on kind of how to format some of these things or what isn't good information to put up there. But most of this will actually be the content, most of it will be created by us, the people who are already managing the projects and deciding which tools we want to use. And so we'll be able to maintain a lot of this in-house. We're mostly paying for the software, but it does come with technical assistance and support on the upfront setup.
Who will be presenting next month on this?
I'm not sure if it'll be Beth Wolf from Information Services or if it will be Bill Evans, our communications, what's his official title? Government Relations and Communications?
It feels like, I feel like it changes.
He does, yes, he's our community outreach specialist. I'm not sure his title. Yeah, I'm gonna be in trouble. But the, the two of them have really been working on a lot of the deployment for this. They've been working with all of the directors. And from planning, we've been pretty engaged with this as well since we do a lot of community outreach in the work that we do.
Sounds good. What is happening with the Equitable Housing Task Force?
The first meeting is on the, is next week on Thursday.
I'll be in Denver, aren't we? Should we?
We will have you in mind, Esme.
Well, that will be a work session in September here at the Planning Commission.
Will there be another task force meeting before that time? There are only three task force meetings.
I've been told of this one. I don't know that there's any other ones.
The next task force meeting is scheduled for September. I can't remember if it is slated to be before or after. It'll be around the same time, and there will be a lot of discussion around the same topics.
I did look up Bill's title, is Communications and Marketing Manager.
I got it half-right. My apologies.
There's one more, there is one more item that I wanted to bring to the commission's attention. So generally speaking, the commission is slated to review any amendments to Chapter 4 of Development Code prior to going to council. However, there is the ability through the comp plan to take amendments straight to council when directed to do so by another government entity. So the commission may be aware that Metro has adopted a mandatory commercial food scrap program, and the vast majority of the requirements for implementation that the city has to take on do not need code amendments. There is one minor sentence that we need to add to Chapter 4 to be in compliance. So Metro has imposed a deadline of, at the end of July. So we will be going to, for our public hearing for that one sentence on the 15th. So that will not be heard by the commission, it will be heard by council, but it's very minor and actually references another code provisions in another chapter. So I'm happy to speak more on it, but like I said, it's relatively minor.
I think our feelings won't be hurt. Nothing else for the state of the order? Let's adjourn. We're adjourned at 7:20.